Special May 17th, 2022. Winchester Planning Board, we are being recorded both on Zoom and via Wind Cam. Thank you, Wind Cam, which is broadcasting live out to our studio, no, our non-studio audience. If you have any questions, you can always reach us at planningboard@winchester.us. And your email goes to every member of the planning board as well as to our town planner, Brian Zakely. Brian will be joining us in person later on. He has an event he's at right now. We have with us Nancy Plakari. We have, let's do a roll call vote for everyone in the planning board. Sally Dale.
Here.
Nick Rosados.
Here.
Kurt Spring.
Here.
Peaching Scott.
Here.
And Diop Jerius is here as well. So this evening, we have one thing on our agenda, and that is a discussion with Form and Place to talk all about the the next step in our Main Street. I don't know what we call it, revitalization, evaluation, future plans, visioning?
Corridor revitalization.
Corridor revitalization. So I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's you guys' show this evening, pretty much?
Yeah.
So why don't I turn it over to whichever of you wants control?
Okay. I thank you. I think that will be me. In fact, we weren't sure John was going to make the scene because he's on day six of COVID. And he actually looks much better at the moment than he has the last week, so.
But I'm gonna mute my microphone because I don't think anyone wants to hear me talk. So I'm just gonna mute it because my voice is too shy. But I'll jump in if I need to.
Yeah, John had put together a section of the presentation, and I guess I'm going to deliver that instead and ask him to embellish if he can. So let me go ahead and share my screen here and then we can get going here. All right. Is everybody seeing that now?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, guys, for giving us the time. And I know we have potentially another slot in the calendar in a couple of weeks. So we'll see how things evolve today. And then I know we're also shooting for maybe a wider meeting in the middle of June. So, you know, coming out of our last get-together, at the end, you specifically asked for questions. And Sally, I think that was you. And so we took a stab at sending along some questions, which I think Brian said made it into your packet. So we can certainly spend some time looking at those. And I'd love, we would love to have your feedback on those. So what I think are sort of more, are sort of fundamental questions about where we're headed with the visioning and the goals for the quarter. But I guess I was thinking, unless you feel otherwise, that we could run you through our slides first and then come back to these at the end with sort of whatever insights we can impart on you. And then see if you guys are on the same page and see how you react to these. Does that sound like an okay strategy?
Yes.
Okay. And then there also was an ask, and I think maybe it was you, Nick, about sort of giving a visual tour of the corridor. And so John and I went up, back up to and walked the corridor. I'm getting a little bit of feedback. I don't know if somebody has, whatever. Anyway, I'll work through it. We went up about a week and a half ago and walked the corridor. We had to shift our day a little bit because of weather. And then we were supposed to meet with Brian and have him walk with us for part of it. But it didn't time out right because he works remotely on Tuesdays, I think. So in any case, we subsequently met with Brian and gave him some of our impressions. And that sort of led to these series of images. So let me just jump right in. I'm just gonna jump right in and we're gonna look at it sort of a series of two different ways of really analyzing the quarter. One is kind of looking at a series of street sections that will move you from south to north and look at them in light of how there's sort of a pattern change multiple times during the course of the quarter. And this is sort of how we distilled it down. And obviously, there are many ways to look at this. But we were struck by these particular zones. And the red dots sort of represent places where we cut a section. Just it's kind of an AutoCAD section, actually. It's not a beautiful visualization, but it's something that gives you sort of the nuts and bolts of what the right-of-way is like and how it relates to either parking areas or buildings that front on the quarter at that moment. And, you know, each one of these zones, as you'll see, has a distinct character to the Zone 1. I think we all know it's essentially going from the supermarket up to essentially Dunkin' Donuts. And it's the, you know, particularly on the east side, which is the top side on this diagram. It's, you know, looking at sort of the strip-type development with parking lots in front, et cetera, et cetera. Zone 2 kind of transitions, there's a little moment there of streetscape that is double-loaded and has some definition to it, which is kind of nice to see. And it's quite a transition from the Dunkin' Donuts to the next building. And then you get into sort of different zones. Zone 3, you get to Bellino Park, and so you have open space on one side. And then as you get to the Swanton street intersection, there's another transition there. And it's intriguing. And then as you continue north, and we'll look at these as we go through. But as you get into situations like the large medical office building and buildings that don't align with streets, et cetera, et cetera, and all the way up to the gateway at Cross Street at the top on Zone 7. So that's just gonna be sort of the first little tour we're gonna take. And then we're going to look at it more thematically at sort of design variables, both for building siting, for buildings and siting of buildings that I think are things that are the types of things that we would want to address moving forward. So it's kind of two passes at it with a slightly different lens. So I just put this in and I added some dimensions at the bottom. I'm sure you all are intimately familiar with complete streets, but in case not so much, this is a diagram of what's called a neighborhood connector street, which I think, you know, potentially has a lot of the characteristics of what we might be looking to achieve along the North Main Street corridor.
I'm not familiar with the concept of complete streets, but I'm looking at the visual and it's.
Yeah. Okay, well, sure. Thank you for saying that. So complete streets, basically, it's sort of a movement now where cities can put together implementation guides based on a series of standards that have been developed. That it's basically streets that are for all, you know, for all modes. So you have two-way traffic, you have bike lanes, you have pedestrian environments that are very well-defined. There are different zones within even the sidewalk. If you look in the lower left there, you know, there's the sidewalk zone here. And if you look at some of the detailing here, and you can study this further as we're gonna, there's a frontage zone along the facades of the buildings. There's a pedestrian zone where sort of walking is imagined to happen. And then there's an amenity zone, which includes landscaping and other things like that. So it's just a, it's sort of a set of guidelines for what would be a complete street?
No, I get it. It's fantastic with a wife who commutes into Somerville every day and on her bike. And me being a past bicyclist, I think I've used complete streets in my life, so.
Good, good. Well, I mean, for me, I think the fascinating zone really is this, the sort of parking amenity zone here where you can get, you know, with bumpouts at crosswalks, obviously, wanting, which happens, we'll see. It happens a couple of places along the North Main Quarter already, which is a positive thing. But this is the zone that gets occupied by everything from bus shelters to outdoor dining, to bike racks, to, you know, additional landscaping. And it's just a very flexible and exciting zone that I think can make a, really bring a streetscape to life. So anyway, that's sort of just an intro. And so I just wanted to throw this out here. So you had a, maybe an idea, so you could look, compare the sections as we go through them to this sort of concept. And we can jump back to it if that's helpful. Okay, so so what we tried to do, and again, John took his life into his hands about 20 times walking out into the middle of the, of the street. And some of these are in Google Earth, but in a lot of cases, they're actually photographs that John took. The arrows are a dead giveaway. But in any case, there was one time up at Cross Street at the very top, which was very, it was, there's so much traffic coming on Cross Street and trying to turn, and there's a police detail up there. And we had to get the police detail to stop the traffic so John could get a photograph. But anyway, I digress.
Thank you, John.
And so instead, he got COVID. So anyway, this is the section down at the town pantry down at the southern end here. And we will look at this a couple of different ways. But, you know, clearly, you have the sidewalk straddling or between the 42 or so foot wide right-of-way. And then you've got a 72-foot, you know, zone here between the sidewalk and the facade of the strip center here. So that's, you know, obviously not a glorious pedestrian environment to walk down. And then we'll look at how the curb cuts, you know, further contribute to that. And in this case, there are two large curb cuts going in and out of this parking lot. So you have a, you have a nice condition on the west side, the right side here with a two-story facade. And then it kind of erodes as you get over to the, to the east. Is this pace okay for you guys?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Fine. So this is.
Quick question. You mentioned 42 feet right-of-way. Can you just, as you go along, tell us what you figured out for right-of-way or is the street goes up and down?
You know, it actually doesn't change, which is amazing. It's basically between 42, 43, sometimes it gets to 44. There's one place at the intersection of Swanton where the geometry of the street changes, of North Main changes, and it widens at Bellino Park there because there's a turning lane onto Swanton. And it gets sort of in more into the 48 to 50-foot wide range. But other than that, it's remarkably consistent width. And the sidewalks don't vary that much either. And so that's, that's what's fascinating when you look at this series of sections is you see how blown open this street section feels here. And then when you get to a, you know, a well-defined area, maybe in Zone 2 or there are a couple of spots, you'll see, oh, wow, it feels like a real street section. And so it's these kinds of conditions that we obviously want to try to tidy up. So this is the first of two cuts in Section 1. And here's at the other end of Section 1, up by the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot, similar kind of condition. You know, it's slightly better in that the buildings here in this section, at least, are trying to get to the street edge. And you have these large side parking lots. But in many cases, and you'll see this up and down the quarter, if you have a, you know, a double-loaded parking lot with an in-and-out, as you see here in the Dunkin' Donuts parking lot. And then in many other instances, it butts up against the next property where the parking and the building are flipped. So you might have, you know, 100 feet of paving sort of easily. That really makes a big, you know, gap in the street wall concept. So anyway, this is a similar, still, this is why Zone 1 kind of has these similar characteristics. You've got a bizarre condition here over on the, on the west side with this sort of a sloped surface here. And well, I'll come back and show you the whole, the curb cut there is crazy. There's like a 260-foot-long curb cut continues. Yeah, in case, in case it wasn't complicated enough. So then, you know, the Dunkin' Donuts is right here where my cursor is. I assume you can see that. And then the next building up, you know, is this lovely contrast. And we're now getting up to the block with the Coco Bedakian. And you can see all of a sudden, the same right-of-way width, the building on the east side here, I'm just gonna say the left side, just to keep it simpler, is set back a little bit more from the street and the sidewalks kind of wide in front of Coco Bedakian. But here you have a building-to-building dimension of 70 feet, right? So it actually starts to feel like a reasonably well-defined street. And if you imagine these travel lanes getting sort of tightened up a teeny bit, like Brian said, you guys are shooting for 10-foot-wide travel lanes. And then so if you had bumpouts with, you know, certain amenities and other things, or crosswalk bumpouts happening in these parking zones, you can see that it actually would become, you know, a much more pedestrian-friendly environment. Anyway, so here you have a situation where even though the building on the right is only one story and it has a flat roof, you still feel like you've got enough of a beginning of a sense of a definition of a streetscape here, so.
Yeah, it's almost pretty, if you get that far in your imagination.
Yeah, careful, careful. But yeah, please feel free to interject at any time here because I just keep rambling on until I, or John, you wanna, oh, you're good.
Michael, could you go back to the, the complete street section for a second? Just as comparison to remind what sort of the optimal might be? So it's more a 10-foot travel lane and a seven-foot parking zone. But we have these like 11-foot parking zones without bike lanes.
Right, right. I mean, eight feet is the most typical sort of parking dimension. But if the right-of-way is a little tortured, you can, you can get away with seven-foot-wide parking zones if you have the bike, the buffer of the bike lane. So what happens is when you get below that 44-foot-wide dimension, which you guys essentially have, like more like 42, then the decision becomes, does the bike lane, that's a dedicated bike lane at five feet, and that's the narrowest dedicated bike lane you'd want, you really, if you had active parallel parking, you'd really want the bike lane to be six feet so people aren't getting, you know, car doors open in front of them. But so the alternative is if you have a slightly narrower right-of-way is to go to a shared bike lane, which might be, you know, like a three-foot bike lane with a dash line on the inside separating it from the travel lane. So it's a combined travel lane and bike lane that would ideally be 13 or 14 feet. You could get, you could do 14 because you have 42 feet in your section.
So in some of the newer streets in Cambridge and Somerville, I've seen that the parking is on the other side, right? So the biking is between the parking and the sidewalk?
It is.
So is that for slower streets or is that for any street? And what's the reason behind that?
Well, that, that actually is the wave now is to move the biking between the parking and the sidewalk. But, but as you can imagine, there, there's an island that then appears between the bike lane and the parking. And so then you need even more right-of-way width. So you're adding another, at least five feet or so on both sides of the seat of the street. So you're needing to get, you need to be more in the mid-50s in terms of your right-of-way width at that point. So there are not a lot of places where that is applicable unless you have extra wide sidewalks that you can steal a little bit from or something that gets complicated too. So it doesn't happen in a lot of places, even though it's, people think that's, that's the.
You know, as a cyclist, if it's too constrained, if the bike lane is between the car and the sidewalk, and it feels very constrained, I sometimes ignore it and will ride in the street. Because under certain circumstances, it kind of feels like a death trap, you know? But it's, it's different. Like, some of them, I love it. But there's one downs, there's a downhill section on Beacon Street, I think, going into Somerville that I just can't do because it's just way too close to the driveways. And you're going fast because it's downhill. So I, as a cyclist, I ignore it. But, but anyway, it's, it's a good point, though, that those are, I guess it'd be nice to have in certain circumstances.
Yeah, I think it also depends upon the amount of curb bumpouts you want to do to support things like outdoor dining and more crosswalks. Because if you imagine the bike lane being on the inside of that, suddenly you're swerving in and out of the bumpouts in the bike lane rather than having it be a pocket for the cars to park. So I think there's, it's also weighed against the priorities of what the ultimate, you know, design direction for the town wants to be. I think that's another factor.
I think, I want to chime in here just because I think there are a number of different solutions that would be interesting. I've seen in some places, like on Beacon Street in Somerville, where they've essentially moved all of the parking to one side of the street. And they've done something weird with the bike lane on the other side. But I think that it might be interesting to see, for instance, where the businesses have onsite parking, do we need to have on-street parking on that side of the street? So is there a way of using what little width we have differently along the course? Still making it consistent for traffic, but taking advantage of some of the off-street amenities to put more space for on-street amenities?
Yeah, I mean, that's intriguing, especially as you get up into the, you know, the residential sections a little bit to the north. But I think any retailer would tell you they would not want to give up the on-street parking right in front of their storefronts, so.
You know, I can understand that, I, you know, but there are, there are bustling commercial areas in towns where you do have to cross the street to get to the business. And as long as it's.
Or the parking is behind.
Or the parking is behind. So as long as there's, it's a pedestrian-friendly area. I mean, I'm used to, you know, going to places like Ball Square where parking is not readily available, regardless of what time of day. And so you just get used to walking a little more as long as you're convinced that it's safe to do so. So it's just something to throw in the mix and see what feels right.
Yeah, that's a good comment. Yeah. All right. Well, we'll come back to that again if we need to. So this is where we were, 70-foot. And so then, just shifting up a little bit further, here you have the commercial block on the, on the left-hand side that's right on the street edge. And, you know, sort of a two-story volume there, it gets to be two and a half a little further up. And then you have a sort of a more of a residential condition on the right-hand side here with a slight elevation change with that site wall and setback 34 feet from the street. So you can see, you know, it's not more than a block or a half a block until the condition really evolves a little bit. And in this case, we're sort of introducing the residential. But it's, you'll see, by the time we get up to the Woburn line here, there's like almost no two conditions that are the same. So anyway, let's just keep going because there's plenty to look at here. So now we're entering the sort of Bellino Park realm. And there's sort of three conditions here across from Bellino. You've got 846 North Main, which is the three-story mixed-use building with the flat roof that we can, we'll come back and talk about that from an architectural perspective. But, you know, I mean, I'd love to get your, your guys' thoughts, you know, after we, I'll throw out some more ideas about that building. But just about, you know, the scale of a building that's three stories across from a park. And is that, does that feel appropriate? And is it, is it the, is it the scale height massing that's the issue? Or is it the detailing and all those things? So anyway, we can, we can sort of revisit that because we're focusing on street sections at the moment. But, you know, one thing that John and I, I think, both felt was it's nice to have a meandering path going through the park, but it felt weird that this was the one place that you didn't have a sidewalk actually on the street edge. And I don't know how you guys feel about that either, but.
We note it every time we drive by.
Okay.
It's, it's not a, I live like, you know, 30 seconds from there. And that, there's not an awful lot of pedestrian traffic coming down that route. So, and that, the Swanton-Main intersection is insanely dangerous because of that turn lane. That they put in, they put that turn lane in in order to ease traffic going up to the transfer station. And they moved a pedestrian crosswalk further down Swanton. So it's essentially just as the person is accelerating around the corner, their pedestrian crosswalk. So it's, I think we need to look at that again. But, you know, have it, you know, I walked through that park on my way home because I walked from downtown to here. And the meandering thing is actually kind of nice because it gets you away from the road.
That's good, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it is kind of a very different feel to it. Because it moves you away from the road. And to be honest, that walk along Main Street is, is not really a highlight of, you know, walking in Winchester. Being in, in, in the green is nice, but I can understand what you're saying about that lack of a sidewalk there.
Yeah. Okay. Well, that's, I like the local perspective. That's good. All right, let's keep rolling along here. So this is a little bit further again at Bellino. And of course, you know, this is that, the site before you get to Swanton. That's the, there's a vast parking lot there with the Dairy Barn floating in the middle of it. But you're looking at 158 feet of paving, you know, between, between buildings, except that the Dairy Barn kind of sits in the middle of this sea of asphalt. So that, that's, you know, a prime site, obviously, to make sure that that gets teed up in the right way. I'm gonna keep, keep the ball rolling here. So then, this is where I was mentioning, Sally, that you get to the, the, a right-of-way widens 48 feet plus as you, as kind of the geometry bends there.
I think there's a bus stop at that very site too. Diab, is that correct?
The bus stop is, is north of Swanton.
I know there's five bus stops on North Main.
They are plan, and they're, I think both sides are north of Swanton. They're planning on moving the southern bus, going bus stop to right in front of the Dairy Barn. And they were planning, and that, they were, the plan is to actually take away one of the curb cuts to the Dairy Barn. But I don't know that they actually spoke to the owner of the property before they, this was the MBTA's plan, so.
Yeah, we should, we should locate the, the bus stops because that is a.
But they, they are in flux, so.
I bring up the bus stops with some emphasis because people are, everyone is very interested in adding residences to North Main Street. And we're also very interested in keeping cars off the road. So those, to me, that bus route, because I think it goes from Woburn Center through Winchester Center to Wellington, which is the orange line, is a really important mass transit link.
As, as long as it runs once an hour, it stops, it stops running around. I think the last bus gets up to Woburn around seven-something. I, I used to take it to work. So I work in Harvard Square and it took me an hour and a half. No, it took me an hour to get to Harvard Square and an hour and a half to get home because you have to go, it's, it's a, and it only runs once an hour. So if you miss the bus, you are, yeah. So we need more residences to, we get more traffic to get more bus service.
And have you guys, have you guys reviewed the new MBTA plan for, was this mentioned in the, because it just came out today, right? I believe, or today or yesterday, the new MBTA plan for bus routes?
That's news and we will review it. I'm sure we won't get any more service.
Yeah, I kind of assumed that, but, okay.
So I'd like to come back to this again, also in our second series of diagrams. But because this intersection, you know, is, is clearly a cross, an important crossroads. And it's obviously where you switch from the GBD-2 to the GBD-3. You've got, you know, different height buildings on various corners. You've got some corners not well-defined. You've got a lot of stuff going on here that is the kind of stuff that we would want to address, I think, ultimately with guidelines or standards or however we end up approaching that. So let's keep going here. So here's another moment that is two, two ships or two buildings sort of passing in the night. Their, their facades do cross just a little bit. This is the Winchester optical one is the one that's, it's unfortunate that it's not located on. Uh, this is the Winchester optical one is is the one that's it's it's unfortunate that it's not located on the on the corner of Swanton. But uh, but this is a sort of this sort of second. Very brief moment where you do feel a little bit of a feeling of enclosure and a streetscape. And you've got actually sixty feet here now from building facade to building facade. So. Um, I'm going to show you an image at the end of this. Of Main Street in Woburn, uh, which has that same sixty foot wide building to building. And it's and depending on the heights of the buildings, really, you know, in relationship to the width of the streetscape. You know, I I think this is is getting closer to what we would be shooting for, um, although I. I I I'm a big fan of um. Of the of the two stories, at least in in these, um, you know, sort of crescendo moments as you go up and down the corridor where you have a key intersection. Okay, and then so then when then we sort of shift zones again here, uh, well, then actually this is um evolving four heading up to five. You know, we you've got the uh. The multifamily residential on the on the left here, which, you know, has kind of a thoughtful idea about how. It transitions to the street. It has a landscape buffer zone, has a porch zone. It's, you know, it's. It's cited in a, I think, in an intentional way. Um, but of course, it's across from, you know. Large, large asphalt parking lots and very little street definition. So. You have sort of vignettes of moments like that 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 have hope, uh, or maybe you guys don't particularly like that.
Yeah, I mean, as a a as. A multifamily residential, you could say that it's it's not terrible. I mean, it looks like they made some kind of an effort there.
Yeah, the the only, well, the issue I have with that is that I don't think that that generates a lot of. Main Street activity, most of the activities in the back of the building. So while it looks nice in the front, I don't really, it doesn't enliven the street other than.
Are you talking about mixed use? I mean, did you want to have a?
Well, I'm thinking. I'm just thinking about people don't enter the front of the building, you know, they're they're coming in from the back because that's where the parking is. So have a you have a facade, but other than the architecture, it doesn't really. Enliven it. There's there it doesn't generate. Traffic in front of the building. So it's not like you had, um. You know, like a. The if the main entrance were on Main Street and things like that, just trying to get foot traffic up there. People just drive in the back and park and go in.
You're talking about Sakura or are you talking about that?
No, the apartment's on the left side.
Yeah, I I, um, we used to live on Washington Street in Somerville, which is very, uh, it's basically a state highway. Um, and it it was, you know, really fast and we had a setback just like that with a little. Stairs and we just sit on the curb. I mean, it's sort of a curb culture. I mean, um, astute culture. Right? We just sit there and talk to talk to neighbors as they walk by and it's quite lovely.
It is, but that doesn't happen here.
Right, because there's not that street life.
Yeah.
Add the amenities that the wine and cheese shop down the street.
Yeah, so this this building has been there for yikes. Couple decades, maybe. It's not it's not that new.
Okay, so so functionally it needs to be improved in terms of where.
It just.
No, it's just proximity. I mean, you would you would have to have programs that.
So it's too too close to the street?
No, no, you would you just want uh other programs like stores and and coffee shops near it. So then.
Oh, sure, of course. Yeah.
And that front and side then becomes really activated because people are sitting on the stoops.
It's important for you to know that there's a gentleman who has, I think he has an offer to purchase on Sakura. Um, and he's been back and forth with the town a couple of times. It's a historic building and. And it's not likely that he would be given permission to tear it down. And so we get into the zoning regs regarding preservation and then adding on to.
Just to be clear, Sally, uh, the the demo delay has long passed.
Okay.
So he could.
Yeah, but no, I think he needs permissions and and I don't think he's going to get them easily.
No, he has. He doesn't need permission to tear down.
He's not the owner yet, though. It's the owner doesn't have the.
Yeah, I don't think we should lose hope yet. Let's not throw the towel in.
I'm not throwing the towel. Technically, the demo delay has passed. So legally, the building can be torn down.
Okay.
I just want to be clear about the language there, so.
I appreciate that, Diab.
I don't want to turn down either. It's right up the block from me, but legally, it's the legal the legal thing is so, okay. We divert.
That's fine. That's great. Um, all right, let's carry on then. A little further north now we're getting up, um. On the on the left is is the Russell Hill Building, the big brick building. Um, that is on a different geometry from the street and it peels away. Um, I'm going to go to the next one just to give you the full context, but so the northern end of it, you have the. The building is closer to the street edge and you've got a landscape buffer there, but even at this edge, it. The closest point the building gets to the street is forty seven feet. Um, and as you get sort of farther down to the south. You know, it's it's peeling back in your in the corner of the building eighty eight feet from the street, and that's allows you to have a double loaded parking field in front. There's no landscaping effort uh in terms of visual buffer. Um, so, um, that's. You know, an unfortunate relationship, but um, we and we'll come back to this a little bit because there's some things about the site that that. Are might be worth looking at in terms of the the way you access the side parking even a little bit further north of here, but. Um, so this is just yet another unusual condition. And that is not really seemingly um caused to buy any, you know, street geometries or anything like that. And there there are some cases like the Verizon building or other things where you can say, all right, that building's not on the same geometry as the street. But it's because there's a side streets coming in at a weird angle. And this is just sort of a random.
Yeah, it's a little problematic, but.
It landed. Yes.
There was a railway line which went behind there called the Woburn Loop. It's possible that it's aligned with that old railway line.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, that's important to note because the Woburn Loop, um, defines a lot of the activity. Um, behind the lots on the east side.
Okay.
It's a, you know, it's 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 not there, but its presence continues to be felt.
Right, right. I was actually looking to try to understand what parts of the corridor here were on the on the old redlining map. Um, and the uh, I was noticing this rail line with clearly a rail line going through back there and I'm like, is that rail line there? Am I forgetting it? And but I I hear what you're saying now that it was.
Yeah, so Bellino Park is was part of the Woburn Loop. And if you go right behind Andrea's Pizza. There's this cavern which was where.
I'm going the wrong way here. Sorry.
We're going to space.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to get to the north so I can find my bearings here, so. All right. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
No, it's 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 what Diab's saying is so it's so interesting.
Oh, here's the rail here.
Right. And so one thing is Winchester owned Woburn Loop land when the rail line was decommissioned. And um variously, as you go up North Main Street, the property owners. Acquired pieces of the Woburn Loop or didn't.
So that looks like that explains Bellino Park as well.
Yes.
Yeah, it was uh, it was put in before they before they realized that you could make it into a rail trail, but.
That's the main point, that the rail trail option was was.
It really wasn't that where, yeah.
Street fronting owners.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, maybe that's explains the alignment. Who knows, but.
Do you understand what I just said? They variously sold it or didn't sell it? So it's all chopped up behind there?
Yeah, it's pretty chopped up, yeah.
Yep, yep. But you can see the geometry of the building. Even even such is nothing to do with the rail line.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Has to do with sun? Is it like?
I think it's it's it's, who knows?
No, it's just an unfortunate occurrence that we don't really.
Double loaded parking.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
I'm a sea of a car here.
All right. Uh, well, that was a good day. That was interesting diversion for me. All right, so now we're up and and moving into zone six. We just have a couple more in this set and then we'll we'll move on to the other one. And I I want to make sure we leave time to have more. Thoughts from you all. Um, the the Minnekey, uh, you know, site here is another one of those classic, uh, over a hundred foot of, uh. No, no curb, um, you know, um. Just able to drive across the sidewalk at any location. Um, and, you know, John, you were saying you noted a number of places where. You know, um, ideally you would you would recite the building, but if there was a intermediate step, at least you could like get a landscape buffer. You could get a controlled location for an in and out and those kinds of things, but instead of having the sort of everywhere is game. So, um, and I'm just gonna try to wrap this section up here. Moving farther, just a little bit farther north, um. You know, you've got this, um, this incredibly long facade of this medical office building. Um, we which has an entrance sort of in a more of a suburban location off of Main Street. It's a it's a it's a twelve foot high um volume. Uh, going, you know, hundreds of feet of facade length and that sort of ratio of of, uh, you know, height to to. Facade length is something we would want to make sure is is done more proportionally and appropriately. Oh, yeah, a hundred and sixty two feet long. I made a note there. Uh, and then across you have a across that, of course, you have another nonconforming use, so. And then. Up at this at the town line, um, here's sort of the last condition. And I I sort of I like this crazy building on the right here. Um, it's, you know, somewhat of. Non-descript in some respects in terms of it's stucco facade and all that, but it sits there right on the corner of border cross. And it really does give you a little bit of a sense of a gateway.
And you should know that that building there that you were just talking about, that building is in Woburn and where those that white cars parked, it's Bavarian Motors. That's the first address in Winchester.
Really? So it doesn't follow the cross border street uh line there?
Well, I I seem to remember that. In fact, um, the Anka House, which is that yellow house that has the banner above the door. I think that house is in Winchester, but. The house on the corner.
That intersection is in Woburn, which is one of the reasons why this is Cross Street, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so that intersection is in Woburn and there's been, um. Winchester has wanted to. Make that much safer for a long time and Woburn is. Has other priorities. And so we're sort of at. Um, I don't know how we're gonna that that the intersection always gets like an F or something. It's it's.
It's really bad. But so the yellow house is the Anka House and Anka is a nonprofit in town that does tons of good for the community. And that's a used secondhand gor- uh fancy clothing store. And so everybody knows it, the Anka House, right? And then there's Bavarian Motors and that's the beginning.
Yeah, yeah, interesting. Okay.
Thank you.
That's good. And there was an absolute, like I said, a ton of traffic flowing in uh off across trying to get onto the main. So then if you go just a little bit further to the north, here's your sixty foot, you know, building to building, uh, forty two foot wide right away. You know.
Yeah, that's a nice, I'm glad you went that far because now you're in Woburn Center and Woburn Center's got a lot to offer in terms of. The streetscapes as well as the history.
They've tried a lot. No bike lane.
So, but but in terms of the buildings and uh.
Yeah, and and the facades, I mean, the granted, you've got a one story facade on the on the uh. Uh, left there and and yet, you know, with the landscaping and everything, it it kind of holds its own reasonably.
And then on the right, you have the Mansard roof on a looks like a relatively new building or or could be relatively new, uh, but really nicely nicely done.
Yep.
I I think that's. It I think it's been redone.
But it looks like it could be done. It doesn't look doesn't look uh. Out of green, out of reach.
Yeah.
About this uh street too is that all the landscaping is on the left or all the trees are. Sort of a simplicity to that.
I think there might be major gas lines underneath. I don't know, but that strikes me as a possibility.
Or maybe. The right side is like a harder line and then the left is like the softer giving way to that steeple.
It is interesting about the trees.
And it also, you know, you're fighting a four four story facades there. Which probably is less conducive to that, but. Yeah, it's interesting that the the brick with the parapet there, you've got a four story reading on that building too, but anyway. Yeah. So that's sort of the that's the section, uh, street section tour of the of the of the corridor. This and now so now and and, you know, those are really kind of crude sections and then we. We can kind of, um, you know, gussy it up and get in some, you know, really, you know, more interesting, um. Visualizations down the road, you know, and 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 make it more appealing for conversations with the larger public. But that was sort of our our way of doing our own intake and kind of figuring out what the the street sections are doing. This is a just a scribble page that of of my walking up and down the uh. The corridor, sort of looking at key moments that I thought uh needed attention. And so I translated that into a series of diagrams. The first one here is is kind of on its own. It's it's a more than just looking at the right away. And I was curious just to. Sort of think and look at all the crosswalks and what the spacing was between them. And you can see that and and now you'll have to bear with me. John and I were working in in separate places and so now I've rotated the map unfortunately. So, um, the north is to the, uh, I do have a north arrow on it, but anyway, north is um to the right. So, um. You know, when you're down here at the south, you're you're looking at less than five hundred feet between crosswalks. You know, the recommended, you know, it is to, you know, at least have two hundred feet between crosswalks, but. Uh, that's sort of a minimum that you hear about, but um, but then there's some places where, you know, three locations here where you're, you know, eight or nine hundred. Um, feet between crosswalks and a couple of spots, you know, granted, um. It doesn't, you you're not. Not necessarily uh important to do it unless it's it's a kind of a a travel line or or something where there's a good flow of of uh action. But I feel like this spot here potentially, um, near Salem Street, um, which is at the at the end of Bellino Park. Is is could be a logical spot for something, particularly if this area gets developed a little bit further. Uh, by the dairy barn here. Um, and then if you wanted to get another one in here, Canal Street seems like that's a. I said, this is your neighborhood, right, Diab? But that goes all the way through, um, Canal Street. That seems like that might be a logical place for a crosswalk.
There is a flow of kids to the Lynch School. Um, on the west side of Main Street. So. It's actually go it's all the way down Canal. You take a ride on. Whatever it's called over there. So there there is a flow of people who do cross Main Street. So I know there have, um. I I don't, I I think you can get, nah. You don't want to get there from. Yeah, so the 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 Cross Street at Hemingway kind of gets you there, although it's a little out of the way. Um, but certainly going down Canal Street is the biggest, certainly where all the cars drive down in order to get to Lynch School, so.
Right, yeah.
So looking at the zone, the 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 most recent school district map for Lynch School is really important. Because the school district does cross North Main. It's Lynch Elementary. Um, and it does cross North Main. And so Diab's point is really important.
Okay. That's good to note. Thank you.
And I totally agree with you about more crosswalks because it I mean, people don't jaywalk now because the traffic is just too insane. Um, but the crosswalks are far apart.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was the other thing is, um, the way that the street, um. Mood turns. Me, there are certain places where there's very little line of sight to traffic coming on. And 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 so that, you know. It's I think it may be a little easier if you had a very long line of sight and a few, you know, a couple extra hundred feet isn't a problem, but. Main Street turns enough that you really do need more crosswalks to cross safely, so.
Yes.
Okay.
And the picture that you took that's outside the the four story medical building, oh, you have it in the bottom here. It's got the bump out.
Yeah, there's the bump out. And there's also a bump out here at Sheridan. Um, so tho- there those two are thirty feet from from curb to curb. Um, so you've, you know, you've you've knocked it down from forty two plus to thirty feet of exposure there, which is great.
Yeah, there the the one I the one at at across from the medical building around Hemingway Street, that was done fairly recently. Um, there was that was a very dangerous pedestrian intersection crossing Hemingway, actually.
There's another condition I wanted to bring to your attention when you were back at the Minnekey site, which is that. which is that Glenwood comes into North Maine very steeply. You have to drive up a steep rise at the end of Glenwood. And when you get to the top of Glenwood, you can't see the traffic is coming because the parking is right there. And that is really near to the Catholic school and the daycare place. And so people are pushing strollers up the sidewalk across where Glen Glenwood meets Maine. And at least three people have told me it's incredibly dangerous.
Okay.
Now, this is, I, to be honest, if we stopped at every corner on this street,
Right, I bet we could. I'm sorry, Deab, you're right.
No, no, I'm, I agree with you. I think that the more we talk, the more we realize how challenging this is for pedestrians.
And the Mineki site is on the verge of being in play and being developed. It will be, it within the next, Brian can tell you, but probably in the next eighteen months, I would think.
Okay.
Hi, Brian.
Good evening, I am back. Okay. Well, you missed the the street section tour, Brian, but I'll send you the PDF. And now we're just shifting gears and we're kind of gonna look one more time along the the corridor here at more of a thematic analysis, sort of looking at building design and building sighting and how that, you know, the types of conditions that we probably would want to address moving forward. And so here's, we we were able to actually very kindly get the model from Josh Fiala and M A P C. And so we haven't had to reinvent this, which is terrific. And so I we we have a sort of the base model, which is great. And so this obviously shows the the two zones. And these are sort of ten points that I'm gonna highlight along the the corridor quickly. And cause I wanna, oh, gosh, it's already eight thirty. That's crazy. I want to get back to the questions. Almost time for tip-off for the Celtics. Come on. Okay, here we go. So, all right. So quickly, I'm looking at number one here, back down to the town pantry. And some of this will be reiterating what he says, so I won't spend too much time on it. But two curb cuts, you've got a thirty-two foot wide in and out here. You've got a fifty-foot wide in and out with, because it curb cut meshes with the property next door. We've talked about how the building sided way back, you got the monument sign. Those are kinds of things that you would want to control in design guidelines as well. Parking in the front setback, a recurring problem here up and down the quarter. So let's just keep going. Number two, so now this is a fascinating one to me because to me, this is really the challenge of architectural design criteria. Cause you know, the person developing this building could say, well, I have pitched roofs, I have stepping volumes, I have corner facade elements. I have porches and I'm using contextual materials. So, you know, there's a whole laundry list of someone saying, okay, well, you wrote design guidelines. This is, what's what's wrong with this? But, you know, the issue you could say is with building siding. But while he would say, well, the building is actually sited nicely relative to the street. I've got landscaping in front, et cetera, et cetera. But it's the parking, you know, configuration, the parking on three sides, you've even got a one space in the front. But it's the, it's again, the adjoining with the adjacent lot and then getting what amounts to basically a seventy-foot wide, unobstructed paved area with no landscape buffering, no split between the properties, et cetera, et cetera.
Parking in that lot all belong to the funeral home or is it half for the apartment residents and half for the funeral, you know?
I suspect it's both because I would say these these spots up against the building have gotta be for the residential, but do you know what the one?
Yeah, no, a lot of it's for the funeral home, having having attended.
It's there, they do have slots along that side of the building.
Oh, they do? Okay.
Yeah, one one other thing I should note about this building is that they have units which are on the first floor in the front and their shades are always drawn.
Enlivening the street?
Because because you're 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 five feet away from all the passersby's looking at your living room.
Yeah, okay. Well, let's keep marching north again here. And and so this is just pulling out different different points. Here, here's that that glorious two hundred and sixty-foot continuous curb cut. You know, in these series of three auto-related uses, the buildings are set back sort of varying sixteen to twenty-six feet. And that whole edge is just completely paved. And then coupled with that, you also have this condition where this building is sited so that there's a big parking lot on the corner, which is great if you're trying to sell cars and you get good visibility. But obviously, that's exactly the kind of thing that we want to address. And it'll it'll show up again in just a minute here. So, eight forty-six North Maine. Building siding contributes to defining the street wall, minimal width to the side entry drive, three-story height, okay, for a site across some open space. You could make all those arguments, I think, reasonably. And then you can get into the architectural design criteria aspects of it and say the materials are not applied in an authentic way, like the stone at the base here. And, you know, it's incredibly boxy, massing with a flat roof and no architectural detail at all on any of the side or or rear facades. So, I mean, you know, this is the kind of stuff we would want to address. But interestingly enough, you know, in many of these buildings, there are certain things that they're doing okay.
Yeah, I mean, the use of blackboard seems, it seems nice, you know, considering Winchester is is a town made of wood in in many sense. But, yeah, all your other points are interesting.
It's 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 not a very nice looking building from the back.
And it has a corner.
It's it's got the triple-decker porches in the back, right, Deab?
It's got something in the back.
Yeah.
It's it's it it really, I I recall from one of our previous meetings with you folks, that you said there is no back to the building. This one definitely has a back.
And it's striking that the the massing of it compared to all the other little buildings around it, but.
Yeah, I liked your, I liked your reference to authenticity with regard to the stonework, which I, which thank you for for kind of bringing that to my attention because I hadn't really thought about it. But now that I look at it, it's it's a valid point.
I I I think of about putting lipstick on a choose your barnyard animal.
Another thing I've heard people criticize this building for is that the windows are flat, flush to the face instead of set in. And it makes it look really just like a plastic or fake building.
That's a good one. I like that. Okay, so more stuff to control here. So now, this is what, this is really my pet peeve is there's just a couple of things going on here that really trouble me. And and the one of the biggest ones is the the vacant lot at the corner here. No building sited there and the parking lot there. But it's also, you know, as I said earlier, this is kind of one of those moments. It's a it's a key crossroads and like the V C O D, I think was trying to do more, try to get more intensity at some of these types of locations.
The village center overlay districts.
Yes.
That's what you're talking about, right? Yeah, I've never understood that, but never mind, go ahead.
Well, no, just the point being that, boy, wouldn't it be terrific if all three of these buildings were at least two stories? Like there's a two-story minimum and the buildings had to be sited so that they were fronting on both a primary street and a secondary street as opposed to, you know, being allowed to not be at the corner. Anyway, these are, these are the kinds of things that you can control by, there's a number of devices you can do. But you can have street hierarchy diagrams that that say, okay, if you're on this primary street, you've gotta have your building sited here, that kind of thing. So we can control building siding like that. All right, I'm just a couple more here. So moving back up to Waterfield Commons, we we sort of already talked about this a little bit. But like I said, there's a nice, they're doing some nice stuff in the front, you know, taking taking into account the porch argument versus the lively uses. We will revisit that. But I was curious what you guys thought about having the second building in the back here in in this configuration here.
I never knew that was there.
I, my, I, so this to me is not great living for the people there. There's not a lot of green space. It's essentially just, you know, it's it's surrounded by asphalt. There's a bit of landscaping, but it's not very usable. So so this, you know, so I don't know, the quality of the units may be great on the inside. I don't know. But and and it works here, I think, again, because you have the Woburn Loop coming right up behind it. So it's not butting up against a residential neighborhood.
Yeah.
And so that.
That Woburn Loop, that's that clear line right there.
Look, looking at the the above angle, you can see the full gable, which is, which is a nice touch on the on the roof.
On the facing the street, you mean?
Yeah, that full gable there, just kind of, it's it's a motif that you see a lot in some of the the more striking buildings in Winchester.
Okay, I like that.
I think that the double building is a really great use of the lot, the deep lot and to hide the density. Just like Sally said, you didn't know it was there. And I think is, I don't know, I forget what the term is, but that like little alleyway, that's that community way. Is it, it's not a Wernoff, but it's something like that where, you know, the the two residential buildings face each other creates like a community. It seems like it could be a pretty lot.
Yeah, I think it's an excellent point. And having an alleyway is reminiscent of, say, the Back Bay in Boston where you have alleys. And
They're places where our kids play and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think the the problem I have is that I don't know that it's used that way. And so there's a, you know, this to me looks like a lot of developments I see where it's just where people pull in their cars, they park their cars, they offload and it's just their driveway. It doesn't really turn into that sort of a shared communal space because it's their driveway.
There's a residence, residential community inside the Winchester town line, but it's on Cross Street that you could probably have a look at, not right now, but it's worth looking at because it seems to have been pretty well done.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah.
Well, I just want to say, John, John and I are particularly big fans of pedestrian muse if they're used correctly. And oftentimes they're used to connect the parking area in the rear through a building facade to the street. And, you know, it's it's how those pedestrian muse are articulated with facades sort of glazing, perhaps turning the corners into the alleys a little bit to give them some life and whatnot. But there are just so many great examples of that around New England from, you know, Portsmouth, New Hampshire to Concord, you know, Massachusetts, everywhere. So we can pull on those. That that's a component that I love, particularly in in blocks. It's less of an issue here, but in particularly in blocks that have continuous storefront facades, having, you know, these nice little mid-block pedestrian connections are can be very nice touch scale-wise. All right. Geometry, we talked about this, geometry aligned, landscaping issues side. So the one thing that's intriguing here is on the north side of of the building here. And it you can see it more clearly from the street actually, but there is an effort here to have a narrow, you know, entrance drive here. The parking is actually set back considerably from the street edge here. And there is some visual buffering happening here as well as along the edge here. So the point just being that, you know, here's a condition where you have parking on the side of a building, but they've they've started to think about, you know, minimizing the impact on on the streetscape. So it's maybe there's something to be learned there. Mineki, we, you know, again, we we've gotten more detail on this than we needed to. So I'm gonna fly through these guys. Entrance suburban kind of entrance here, which we talked about a little bit.
It'd be nice to have some height again, the way you had mentioned the.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Having having a twelve-foot-high building that's one hundred and sixty-two feet long is is tough. And then there's my favorite building at the end. It's just not in Winchester evidently.
Yeah, it's a cute building. It's a it's got character and a little grit.
Yeah, it's so funny. If you look at the, it's some of the the street line graphic up here, though, it does seem like it falls the street, but anyway. Get over that. Oh, no, it doesn't, actually. Look at that. Anyway, I don't know. All right. So that was just sort of looking more kind of at the types of conditions that we would want to address, whether it's still parking in the front or, you know, how, so architectural detailing and things like that. So I I wanted to, you know, we're we're running short on time here. So I wanted to see if I could shut up and let you guys talk a little bit about your reactions to these questions. And man, that that first one, I think, is is really intriguing to me and very foundational about whether you think that there's a way to, through zoning and sort of standards integrated, could could you think, do you think that successfully it could be just made one corridor?
Yeah, I'm assuming that you want a general response as opposed to going through each and every item in section three point O and making a determination what the zoning should be. But I would think generally that you could make it one and and that would give the designer a little more flexibility. It would simplify, certainly would simplify the process.
So my 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 thought about this was, and I have to, I I came up with this word in my mind, which is really awful. It's it's micro zoning, but we can't do micro zoning because it'll drive everybody crazy. But it's it's being extremely context sensitive from from one, like you did with the seven zones. So in in terms of the table of uses, I don't see a problem with extending some of the G B D two uses into G B D three. But that's also got to be something that's, did I say that right? Yes, that's got to be, there has to be buy-in from the community for that. But this question of is use more important than character? It gave me great pause because I don't see those as a dichotomy or.
Yeah, I don't see them as mutually exclusive. I mean, you don't have to sacrifice character. I mean, useful, it'll be what it's gonna be and the character will be hopefully the best we can do.
Yeah, so so I think my main concern in terms of uses is is more in terms of the the scale and the massing of the development. So I I think my vision has always been, as a resident up there, is that the more intense and larger scale things would happen closer to the center. And it would slowly come down in scale as you started coming into areas which are more, have more residential access from the sides, just to maintain some of that. The the two-story feel as we go up Main Street, so.
Two and a half stories. The woman who lives right across the street from Mineki said, please don't put a four-story apartment building across the street from me.
So there's, I I don't know that, so the uses, I think, are, I think it's more the scale of what they go into.
Yes.
And so, for instance, the idea of, I didn't even know that lab R and D was allowed in G B D three and nine two. I think that's a holdover from the light industrial that used to be in G B D three.
No, it's a holdover from Winchester Hospital saying, we want labs. I thought you told me that.
No, well, if I did, I was wiser and more knowledgeable in the past.
What, I I guess what do we mean by character? I I I feel like I almost jumped the gun because I didn't define the term before I spoke. But I was kind of thinking about the way the buildings look and feel and make you feel. As opposed to how tall they are or what they're used for.
Yeah, so it's the classic, you know, traditional zoning is use-based and form-based codes are more character-based zoning. And all communities, I think, including Newton where I live, are are moving towards character-based zoning. So that, you know, you're you're tying the size of development to the size of the lots. You're, you know, and you're ensuring that they have certain relationships to the frontage and and whatever. So and and the quality of the architectural aspects of it. But there there are certain things that are inherent in a in a particular use that that that, you know, gives you a certain character and scale, but you can still do any one of those things wrong, so.
So to your question, should the character of the corridor corridor be consistent from north to south? To Deab's point, that it would become increasingly more two-and-a-half-story residential at the north end and increasingly more multifamily and commercial at the south end. That's, those are uses, but to me, the character could pervade the entire entry experience. And that's where this expression of complete streets, removing the power lines along the entire way, having trees that line both sides of the street, and I'm talking money, so we have to go find money. But but the character should be one whole thing regardless of the scale of, I mean, but the scale of the buildings can can, you know, scale off or scale up, whatever.
See, I think there we're gonna get. See, I think there we're going to get back into what do you mean by character? And so for instance, if we were talking about a more, a uniform design, then I think we have a very eclectic mix of buildings along North Main Street. And I don't want to lose that because I think that's very unique.
I agree. I, it was, I was talking more about the public realm continuity.
Yeah, yeah. So that's where I think we, we, you know, what do we mean by character? So I have to ask you, Michael, what do you mean by character in this question?
Well, uh, it's sort of as what I just said, I, I'm thinking more of the, um, the scale and the architectural feel of the buildings, um, and not so much their use. Um, I don't know, I don't know how else to, to sort of say that, um, clearer.
I don't know what I missed there.
I'm wondering, Michael, is it, if I could say something, Michael, I wonder if it's useful to divorce the word character from style? Um, and make sure we're not confusing that. Um, I think what you were saying, Michael, before was that zoning ordinances traditionally have been very much have use as their primary generator of what, what actually gets built and what happens in any particular place. By character, I always think of when you're talking about form-based codes or hybrid form-based codes. You're talking about relationships of streets. You're talking about heights. Potentially you're talking about certain character that it has, but without necessarily creating a uniform style. So I think that would speak to Diab, to your worry that you like the eclectic styles. Um, as well, I might be reading too much into it, but you like that eclecticism. And I think there's a difference between form-based character and architectural style. And it's a subtle thing, but I think that might be part of the difference.
Yeah, I think you hit it on the head. I'm not, I want to, I want us to, to have architecture which looks forward as well as back. And so when I, so context is often when I hear people say, we want it within the context of existing materials and forms. It's, you know, so we're looking at what's already there rather than looking what might be coming. So I want to, I think you nailed it on the, on the head. It's exactly my concern. So I take you the style out and just looking at the rest is.
I think it's important though, that it also blend with kind of what we, what we have, what we, what we love about the town. So I, I think, I think having.
Yeah.
I, I think having, um, you know, a certain context is important. That doesn't mean we can't have like amazing juxtapositions, like a Frank Gehry thing juxtaposed to some traditional thing that's there uh, to create some really wow, you know, architecture, but, but I think context is important and we, we shouldn't overlook it. Um, we, we shouldn't have something that's pervasive in the way that Sally had mentioned that comes together in certain motifs and memes throughout the town.
You asked the question, um, about the public realm. Um, and it was, you were going into this, um, I think what Brian referred to as a chicken and egg situation. Um, how much of the future vision is shaped by the public realm right away in streetscapes versus development along its length? And to me, if you build it, they will come. If we create a beautiful, I know, because we're running.
Yeah, I don't know where you got it.
Share this with you.
Exactly.
That if we create a, a beautiful, sensitive and generally cohesive public realm, um, it will stimulate investment on this corridor. And in anticipation of that investment, we can focus on the, the other questions that you have in front of us. Um, but the unifying experience is, um, that it's, it's the treatment of the public realm and the welcoming of the eclecticism of the buildings that are there.
Can I respond to that question too, um, about the character? I think what, how I interpret that question would be to look at this image that you have, this graphic that you have in it. To me, reading this, I mean, at, at first it seemed just gloopy gloop, but like more, the more I look at it, the more I understand that the um, west side, right, or the upper side is, has really much more narrow lots. And then the, the lower side, which is the east side, really has really deep generous lots and tends with the, the built environment right now tends to just bleed out. It seems like whoever has that lot tends to just sort of, you know, plop something down down and let it shift. And so the streetscape bleeds out. So like, how do we then incentivize and, and promote sort of the, the use of the streetscape to the tightening? Um, so that it does that street for the public feels good and that, that use can still, you know, be optimal. But the, the reason why I feel like the, the what, uh, east side, the lower side, lots are more, are deeper, is that they are infill, right? They are, and if I could share my screen quickly, um, I want to do this. Um, right, this is, this is the old, um, redlining map from 1938, right? So this is Winchester. You guys can see this, right?
Yeah.
Um, and what we're talking about is exactly this yellow spot, which is the third grade. It's the, it's the least desirable parts of Winchester, which is exactly where we are at. Um, so Main Street, what you guys were talking about, right? It goes up this, it kinks here. And then it kinks there and then goes up there. Um, and here's that railway line that you were talking about. So all these little streets that were established since 1938 were neighborhood streets. They were, they were small residential areas and they need to be protected and such. They're tiny little lots. The, the east side are the deeper lots, they're infill. They, they just sort of bleed out. And so how do we protect those spots, right? So that make it, make it so that a, the adjacent, the adjacent, um, buildings and incentivizing doesn't overwhelm them and continue to sort of, um, make them less and less, um, uh, bring up the primacy of that, right? That, that, that history needs to be celebrated, that, that residential character. Um, and like you said, Michael, that the crescendo and like the, the, you know, tightening and the widening of it, you know, this gets tight with the, with the residential. This stuff gets bleated out, bleed it out, and then this gets tight again here. And then it goes to Woburn. So like, how, how do we, um, with that character base, try to, try to make it so that it is respectful of this stuff while, um, creating these infill to not seem like infills and like leftover spots.
The changing's point exactly.
That's great.
Printed out in the wrong colors because I'm, my toner was out. But this is from the MAPC study and this they refer to as a protection, preservation and enhancement area. And that is exactly what Echi, Eching was talking about. The very tight residential, the pink as it came out of, no, the purple as it came out of my printer. They refer to that as neighborhood protection zones and and that, that's, that whatever we do behind those buildings, to Eching's point exactly, has to be really, really carefully considered.
That's what I understand of characters more like, how do we?
I think there's a lot of precious things that we have in the town that we, we really need to.
But also, you know, certain of these forgotten parcels, like how do we make them so that they, they aren't seen as forgotten still? I, I just feel like those like, you know, parking lots in the front just feels flat down and.
Yeah. I think that was actually that map Sally was from the master plan, but, um, but, you know, let me share one other related.
Yes. How do I unshare?
Right. You should be able to just go down to the bottom and hit unshare. Uh, or I, maybe I can just override you here. Yeah. Um, so I think the other interesting thing to look at is, is the zoning map. Um, and, and so you can see all the green residential here and then all the open space and multifamily large, larger lots here. So I mean, maybe that, you know, can, can be part of the equation in terms of, um, how, how you deal with abutting certain types of districts, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Yeah.
But like the, um, the main street that you showed going into Woburn, there was a, an asymmetry to it, right? Like there, it doesn't have to be like a conformity. There is, there is not, um, a sameness. Um, and we shouldn't treat it like that. So.
Yep. Okay.
Great. If you could, if you go back to that map that you just had up.
Oh, sure.
Um, the, the zoning map, you see at the top of North Main Street, um, the orange block on the east side. Um, that is that housing development that, um, having walked through there, I realized it's actually on, on the, the, right on the, right on the town line, right up against Cross and Main, that big, that larger orange block. Um, it's across from your favorite building. Um,
Yeah.
It, it's really, it's not badly done and it's worth looking at in, in terms of considering how, you know, models, reference models, if nothing else.
The, 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 um, just historically that housing development has had, um, internal quality issues.
Oh, really? Hmm. You mean like construction quality?
Yeah.
Bad news.
So, so, so there's a, there's a distinction between what it looks like on the outside. Just saying, that's, that's.
So, so it has some good qualities and some bad qualities.
Yeah.
The bad qualities.
Yeah. So one, I, I, I was, Sally, I really liked, um, so Michael, if you could go back to your, your, your question slide.
Yeah.
Maybe. So the public realm, I mean, I think that Sally pulled out a very important point in that. I think that the public realm is the leader in terms of the revitalization here. Because I don't know that there has been there, I don't see that the current zoning has prevented a lot of development. I don't think it's driven development, but I don't know that it's really gotten in the way of it. So I think that we need to drive development and I think making it a great place where people feel comfortable going is very important. Because I think we're looking at, I'm always looking at trying to figure out if you put commercial there, where are the customers coming from? Where are the consumers? And I think that the density of the neighborhoods might support it, but only if they feel like it's a great place to go.
Yes.
And so that's, that's kind of.
Good. It feels good.
And so I look at some of the places like, um, you know, over in East Somerville, where they did a great job on, it's not once in Europe, Brian, on, on Broadway, where they've really kind of brought, it just feels like it's a nice place to be. And I think, I mean, I don't know if it's driven development there. I've always, when I drive through there, I think, wow, this is much nicer than it was 20 years ago. But.
That would be a goal, that we would have this be really nice in 40 years.
Yeah.
When your kids are little, when, when they're young adults and starting families.
Yeah. And I, I like the, I like the long view as well, that, that we're building a foundation that we're going to work on and subsequent generations are going to work on. And it's going to, it's not just something that we're going to whip up and it, it, it's going to be the beginning of a process. I, I think it's an important way of seeing it.
Yes, a cautionary tale. The Village Center overlay districts were also part of that long-term vision. They unfortunately did not bring about the change people were looking at. I think number three, abutting properties is important, but requires a lot of context. And I think I'm saying that as, you know, this planning board of several years ago, um, got or asked town meeting to rezone some of the parcels which were on the side streets from GBD to residential. And so there was the, the thought of protecting the neighborhoods in the face of hopefully future development.
And, and does that continue? I mean, obviously the zoning is in place, specific lots that are one lot in have been converted to residential. Um, and that was a really big point in the MAPC report. They said, go, you know, acquire the lot behind the first lot and put all the parking behind. And I could just feel the, the, the hackles rising in the room, um, in response to that because there was a lot of people who didn't want that to happen.
So I, I think that there, I think it's one of the things where we may need to look at it on a lot by lot basis.
Yes.
And, and it may be that it doesn't make sense. And maybe it does make sense. And so that's, I think, um, but I think it's, oh, you know, obviously the pressure would probably be on the western side of Main Street if, in order to, to make those really tiny lots deeper. But that's also where I think you're going to see more pushback because those are the ones where I think the majority of, 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 of lots were turned into residential.
So, and one of the, one of the solutions to that, and I think that's what's happening at that building that is, is it a Thai restaurant? Right near, um, Swanton and Bellino Park that he's proposing to, um, put add a story and put parking under.
Um, are you talking about the, the one right at the corner?
Himalayan. Is it Himalayan food?
Methu or metho.
Oh, metho, yeah, metho.
Oh, that's, that's on the south.
The food is excellent. The building looks like an unfortunate 1980s. I don't know what, but.
I know, it's a hodgepodge right now, but Brian, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but he's, he's, he's talked to the town about adding a story and putting parking under. And I mean, it helps that the Woburn loop drops off right there.
Yeah, there was, uh, he was, they were before the, or the owner wasn't, but an applicant, a potential applicant, uh, you know, potential other developer was going to, to do that. But, uh, they have since, um, kind of quieted and they're not doing anything at the moment.
Yeah, they, they came before the planning board. I think I'm the only one. Twice.
Yeah, twice.
And, um, they were interested in, we were concerned about the, um, the effect on those small houses just to the south of them along Main Street and how that, how the new building would fit into the context of the scale on that side. So.
And I'm really happy that you brought up those four houses because this is where I came to the micro zoning thing, but Eching, you go.
Um, to counter your like site by site evaluation, I thought the whole point of this upzoning is to make it easier and more, um, in- incentivize people to, to do, to do a development that would, um, be faster process, right? The, the site by site is quite onerous for most developers and you don't even want to do that. Or the micros.
Yeah.
So the idea I think would be that the, what's onerous from my, from the developer's perspective would be needing to get special permits.
Right. So the whole point of this upzoning is to just say, hey, kind of like what we did with, um, you know, 10 commerce. It's like, this is what we wanted from this area.
But not.
And, and then speed it up.
No, we probably need to retain some, some.
And we did with 10 commerce. But the whole point of it is to not be so onerous and to just nitpick everything.
Make it predictable. Yeah.
But predictability comes through by right. And so the question is, what do we allow by right along each section? So that doesn't mean that it's.
Correctly and, and make it in a way that, in, in the form that we want and let the developers decide whether or not they want to do that.
I need to push back just a bit because by saying that we want to look at each lot specially doesn't mean that we're going to require the developers to get special permits. It just means that we say, this is a lot which can take a larger scale structure. So they will be able to do that by right. This is a lot where the context of its surroundings means they shouldn't put a larger scale structure. So it's, it's to make it very, I think we're all trying to get to the same place.
That's what I was calling micro zoning, but I hated the phrase. There must be a better word for it.
Well, just don't call it spot zoning. That, that would, you want to be careful not to use that phrase. I, I really thought this micro zoning idea is, was interesting Sally as it came up and I felt like we were just circling back to it. And then you said, you referenced having said it again. Um, excuse me, I, I think it is, it is a really significant challenge to figure out how to, how to thread the needle on that. You want to take the onerousness out of it, the way Eching was talking about. Um, but you also want to be very sensitive to the micro context of each of these locations, which is what I think is endemic to this kind of a context. Um, exercise. So I, I, I don't want to, I don't want to kill the conversation, but it's, it's a classic problem how to do this, I would say.
Should we, should we just take a few minutes to just really run through the last three questions here?
I think so. Or we could do it high level. It's fine. Yeah. Or we could pick it up the next time, either way.
Yeah, I, oh.
Go ahead.
At some point, I, I had a couple of pages that I'd photocopied from the Winchester book that I wanted to share for historical context. It was like three, three pages. I wonder if I can just email it to Brian to, to share it with everyone.
Yeah, I, I have now been looking at, oh, it's nine o'clock on the news.
Yeah. Can I, but I'm sorry, Di, but I, I just, um, I, I would love to just take one second to think about the next meeting or two and where you guys think, what will be the most useful next step from your perspective? And maybe we could do this by email too, sort of float ideas, but. And maybe we could do this by email too, sort of float ideas, but I'm thinking about what we want to potentially craft for a larger group uh, in the middle of June and now is probably a good time to take a first stab at that so we can look at it when we next get together. So. Anybody have any?
Well, I, I was very grateful, Diab, that you would agree with me that the public realm improvements will bring investment to this street.
Absolutely.
And that in response to those um, that, that motivation to invest, we have, or in anticipation of that, of those investments, we have done what we can to articulate maybe not completely form-based code because people talk about hybrid, whatever, something that, that, that sets parameters that are very sensitive to the microclimate of each, almost each block of the street. But the, but if we were going to go in front of the public and say, we're coming up with all new zoning and you can just let us know what you think, but we're just gonna do it, as opposed to we're considering improving the quality of the public realm for this one mile corridor. Um, and we're hoping that it will stimulate investment in some of these under-invested lots. That to me feels like something that would excite residents and other stakeholders.
I think that is a great way to get enthusiasm up. The next question will be, okay, so how big is the building gonna be? So um, I think that as we move forward, what I think I would like to see is kind of maybe um, sketching out what could be some of the, the scale and design criteria moving along the corridor. So we, so we might get a sense of like, you know, you've talked about, you know, two scale, two-story buildings are appropriate here versus there, where three, so some idea of what the balance could be as you're going across the street. What are, what are, what are places which could get a three or four-story building? Um, things like that. Um, so I, that would give me, I think, a better idea of where the zoning might be going.
Yeah. So I, I'll just say, oh, and I may have said some of this when, when we first met. And when we did the, what was called a hybrid form-based code for the city of Meriden, Connecticut, um, we ended up, it was all about the downtown, but we ended up breaking it up into these sub-districts. Uh, and each one had slightly different characteristics about how buildings should be cited, how big they can be, et cetera, et cetera. But they were all intended to be part of the downtown zone. And the real key was we got prescriptive enough in the criteria that we were looking for in terms of building architecture and in terms of citing that um, it almost became, you could, you could get approval administratively. And I know that scares people to death, but if, because there was enough written in terms of the specifics of what can be achieved. So you're getting that predictability the developer's looking for, but you've got enough in there to can, to make sure that you feel confident it's gonna come out right. So.
And, and, and that kind of feeds into your number four, which is, you know, my concern about putting things into zoning is that if you just, if you discover that your standards or your designs aren't working, you have to go back to town meeting and you have to get the language changed versus if it's in a design guideline, there's a little more flexibility on the, on the, on the planning board side.
Well, Diab, can I, can I counter that and say that if it's in a design guideline, it can be interpreted as optional and therefore completely overwritten?
Yeah, I mean, I wonder if we can revisit some of these later things. I think they need more time. Uh, I don't think that's something that needs to be decided right away.
Right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if I can reproduce this book. I had this and it's from 1989. And I mean, you probably have seen this. You probably even wrote it.
That'd be interesting.
But, but um, I'll just, I think I can just take the time, but it takes each block. And it says, it has commentary. This is obviously done like practically on a mimeograph, right? How old this is?
I, I, I guess, Diab, Diab, Michael and Brian, who, who should I email this, these three pages, these few pages to, to share? It's just entitled, Some Historic Styles for Contact to Share.
You can, you can send them uh, to me and I, I can distribute them. Yep.
Brian, I'll also send to you um, some massing, not massing, um, density um, diagrams that I found online that, that were helpful to me. And I thought, because when we got down to number six, that it would be helpful to see, but we're out of time, so we should um, keep the conversation going.
I just have it to you, Brian.
But please send any comments that you didn't manage to squeeze in tonight. Please send them along via Brian, because I, I would love to see that. And, and I think what we'll do is we'll digest this. I assume that we're a go for two weeks from now? For another one of these sessions or is that still up in the air? That is what we had scheduled. So that was going to be May 31st, that it was going to be a standalone.
Are we gonna do another standalone or can, can we get back into the normal two-week schedule?
So it was just gonna be the month of May that we were going to be meeting every month. And then moving on in June and July, we were gonna be just meeting our, our normal time. So there was just these two standalones in May that we had um, agreed to. Um, basically in order to get to that public meeting.
Do we still want to do that or can we fit it into the regular meeting?
I, we, we're kind of packed on the regular meetings.
Okay, alright. I just thought I put it out there.
Yeah, no, the, next week, next, sorry, the 24th is already packed. Yeah, we, we just.
We, we have a problem with the 24th that we need to deal with.
Yeah, no, it's understandable.
Yeah, so um, so the, the question is, uh, Michael and John, do you have enough to go on for our next meeting or?
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we digest all this and we'll communicate through Brian what we think the next, you know, steps should be and it can include revisiting this guideline standard stuff and then kind of going from there and a, an idea about where we might be headed and what we're gonna try to present on the 14th of June. So.
I, I also think, if you're open to it, um, um, that if the planning board members are, are invited, I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but to send you through Brian, their, their responses to your six questions.
That'd be awesome. Oh, yeah, that, that, yeah, that's what I was gonna say is that if we could um, maybe uh, and I can compile everyone's, whether you could, and if you put in the subjects line, you know, forum place comments. And I, I will be able, I will compile all that into a document that I could give um, John and Michael because um, so yeah, if we could maybe, I don't know, since it's fresh in your mind, let's say, you know, by Thursday, i- the latest, something like that.
I was afraid you were gonna say by breakfast.
Well, that'd be great. And that's what I really meant. That's what I meant. That's what I meant anyway, but, but um, yeah, uh, I will, and uh, so yes, please give me your comments. The best would obviously be the answer to these questions and uh, that would be great. Um, otherwise, any other comments you can send to me and I'll compile for, for the team.
Okay, great. And you'll be able to forward the, the, just the.
I already got the, and I saw, I saw that email come in and I'll put that in as well.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.
I'm really excited about the future of North Main Street.
Yeah, thanks for saying that. This is supposed to be an exciting and fun process and I think it's gonna be. I think it is.
Well, I want, I just want the people that live there to feel really happy about walking up and down Main Street and every word that Diab has said, because he's lived on Canal and he's commuted into the city, walking up and down North Main, it hasn't, doesn't sound like it has sparked joy.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, that's a wonderful way of putting it.
That's that Marie Kondo lady who says, throw it away if it doesn't spark joy.
Right.
Okay, thanks a lot. Um, we.
Great job, guys.
Thanks a lot. Planning board goes away. Um, Sally pointed out this afternoon that we now have a conflict with. Am I on? I don't know if I'm.
Yeah, you're on.
You're sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I'm, I'm trying to find the email. So the Winchester Public Hearing on Waterfield is now next Tuesday on May 24th. And we had um, assumed that we would be meeting on the 24th to discuss Waterfield. But um, so we have a, we have a, a conflict both in terms of a schedule and perhaps actually getting the material we need in order to um, make a informed, uh, have an informed discussion about Waterfield. So um, Brian, do you have any insight as to when the actual documents might get released?
So I actually, uh, yeah, I talked to Mark Too Good this afternoon and we figured out at the same time uh, that we have a planning board meeting uh, at the same time that they've scheduled this session. I guess they scheduled it last night on Monday, on Monday, they scheduled it for the following Tuesday. Which, um, yeah, so I did, so yeah, that is certainly a conflict. The only other, I mean, other, other than meeting between now and then, I uh, I'm not seeing you know, or maybe like right before. I don't know if we could, I, I, I don't know. I mean, the only way to talk, the only way to talk about it is a planning board is to meet, so.
Right. So the question to the board is, do we want to meet as usual on the 24th? We would like to have um, some discussion prior to special town meeting, which is June 5th. We do, we do have.
Sixth, by the way, sorry.
Sorry, sorry, June 6th. Um, we do have the special meeting we're gonna have on the 31st, which would nominally be for an hour and a half again. Do we want to add a half hour to that meeting so we will get a chance to talk about Waterfield?
I think it definitely makes more sense to me if we're already meeting to just meet for 30 more minutes than to have a whole other meeting. Uh, that just in general, I would, I would imagine that's what most people would, would want if they had to choose between.
Well, I mean, marathon meetings, I mean.
No, no, but it'd be, it'd be two hours instead of an hour and a half, you know.
Oh, for what you're saying from uh, seven to nine?
What do we have to talk about?
So um, the, so there's a good, there is a revised LDA, a land development agreement, as well as a ground lease. There are going to be new, there's a new site plan. Uh, the building has changed because of the T. Uh, the T has requested, they have basically said that the gatehouse building uh, basic, uh, hid too much of the signage and, and reckon, recognizability of the, of the T station. So they have made some comments and um, any uh, so uh, for, this is not just for Civico, but uh, you know, any, any development there. So that they've come up with new um, you know, not a ton of renderings, but I think several. I don't know when they're gonna be released. It has to be released before the 24th. Um, and how can anyone review it? So I think it, it doesn't even make a ton of, uh, the 24th is an info session. So it doesn't, I don't think it makes sense for the planning board that we need to be if it's an info session, they're not gonna be, uh, I believe, taking comment. There's a public hearing that's, that's in a different date.
What's the date of the public hearing?
I don't, this is all happening very like, very like, like, yeah, I don't, it, it has to be obviously after the 24th. So I think that's the day we should focus on and I think it does make sense to on the 31st, it, it was gonna be form in place for 90 minutes and that was going to be it. I think it makes sense instead for the planning board to take, take the position on the word, that, that way we don't, uh, take a position on Waterfield then. That way we don't have to meet before town meeting on the 6th or do anything else. Like it's, we're already meeting on that day.
On the 31st.
On the 31st, we should just add 30 minutes. It's not a late night because it's already, that's only two, it's only two hours instead of 90 minutes.
Oh, we were starting at 7:30 anyway, so we could start.
We could start at seven, like, yeah, so it'd be seven to nine, so finish at the same time. So that, or, or, you know, whatever, but or seven.
That's, that's uh.
I think that's the easiest uh, amount of damage, or the least amount of damage.
I mean, seven to nine sounds reasonable because we've done that and it's, it gets you out on, at a reasonable hour to uh, whatever.
We just have a lot on our plate as a planning board and um, so.
There's, there's, there's more things that are coming in. There's more people that want to do, you know, try to do natural resource, uh, special permits um, that I'm gonna talk about in a week, you know, in weekly updates, things like 88 Harbor, but the, you know, there's, there, there are others now that are approaching, there are historical commission. There's gonna be more of those. There's, there's just, you know, Washington and Swanton that, I mean, there's just gonna be a lot. Like there's already some, I think, and I think there is going to be guaranteed more over the next 12 months.
And that's totally to Eching's point that.
We, we just have to get through those uh, those individual property decisions quickly, the way.
Oh, the zoning board of appeals requests.
So, so speaking of getting us to it quickly, so I think, I think we are agreed. Um, and I haven't heard anything from Kurt. Um, is that okay with you? You, seven o'clock on the 31st?
Yes, right. So we'll continue every Tuesday in May is, is what is.
Right.
So we, then we get back to a uh.
And then we'll go every other week, I think, mo- moving forward in general, unless there's like some, an actual, like an event of some kind, but generally it's going to be every two weeks.
Yeah, it, it should be every two weeks as soon as we're away from all of these projects outside of our control. So let's, so we'll, 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 we'll put that on the schedule. Uh, Brian, we will have to talk about the agenda for next week since we will no longer be talking about Waterfield next week, so we have to swap out that part of the agenda.
Well, I do know there's, there's, yeah, a subdivision that has been wanting to come in, uh, lowering court. Uh, they're ready. They've already talked with legal counsel, so I told them they couldn't, so they could, we could put them on.
Yeah, okay. So we'll talk about that tomorrow. Um, we're all set. Um, we will, I think that, oh, we, yeah, yeah, we can, we can, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
But before we do that, can I just remind us, I think we still need to approve the March 15th minutes.
There are four sets of minutes that we haven't been approving and we are going to be approving two of them on March 24th, but maybe we'll add the other two. But there are four sets that we need to approve.
I had a scribble note that Eching was gonna do some more.
I already worked with Nancy on it.
Oh, good, good, good. Okay, excellent.
Okay, so we'll make sure, so um.
We'll just add those to the next week, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll move through those. Okay, so.
I moved to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I can't.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Uh, Nick?
Aye.
Kurt?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.